...that started. Maybe she's having like a pre meeting or something.
No, I think sometimes.
Morning Howard.
Because I've never been this and I change this and that'll change.
Off the callers. Because I gotta talk to you very soon.
I used to stand in here walking back and forth.
Thanks.
I pay back and forth.
Okay. My God. Please join me in flight to.
To the flag of United States of America to the Republic which is states, one nation and never forgotten, individual for the redeemed, justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Are you, are we ready? For you. All right, first off, I want to introduce Dustin Hall. He's our mechanic out at Public Works and he's got a, he's going to go over an item with you here towards the. Like an engine? It could be, it could very well be. Nice to meet you Dustin.
Nice to meet you Jim.
So anyhow, I want to kind of go down a few things here just for your information. With the storm coming in, we will be putting some rock down today on the hills and bridges and overpasses, so give you a heads up on that. Had a very good meeting with the contractor that's putting in fiber on the south side of 54 yesterday. We actually drove the area that's been installed and the area that's cleaned, cleaned up and had a very good conversation on continuing to clean up and get some rock down. CPR and first aid training, I've got, there were four or five, we had five, but I think it went down to four employees today getting updated on CPR and first, first aid training. Luke Howard was doing that out at the fairgrounds and I believe it's the Jaeger building is the one they're in, but that will be for the employees that have the M Shaw cards for a rock quarry that are required each year or every two years, I forget which it is, to have their CPR and first aid updated and it's time for those to be updated, so. Remind me, what is M Shaw? It has to do mine. Mine safety?
Mine safety.
Health and adminis- Yeah, yep. Okay. We can look it up. Five year solid waste plan. Currently, we need to update our committee members. This has to be turned in by the end of the year. The past committee members was Nick Rule, the, the three commissioners, Frank Young and Jim Harris. We need to update that so it can be turned in to the state by the end of the year and I'm for sure how, how you want to proceed with that, but I will need a motion on that so we can get that sent off to the state, so. So I move that we appoint Eric Bailey and then the commissioner panel for twenty, twenty-one already, which includes Jim Harris. Okay. And Frank Young.
Second.
Hey, discussion. Go on favor.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right. There's a little bit on the K Camp grant for the TARP to go on one of our dump trucks. We are sending that off, that grant today. It looks like we could be a recipient of the grant to get the TARP paid for, so maybe about seventeen, eighteen hundred dollars in grant money for that. So that's our liability insurance carrier and they provide grants for things like, that improve safety. Right. Deep rocks from falling off trucks. Right. Bumpers that can plow over deers, those kinds of things for those. Absolutely.
And it's something that every year, it's a two thousand dollar grant and it'd be used by, by Public Works and by the county itself for safety.
In general. And no one had applied, so we applied or in the process of applying. Today's the deadline, so. The dump trucks with the hydraulic pumps, that's been an ongoing issue. We are going to take a truck down to Joplin either Wednesday afternoon or Thursday morning, depends on the weather. They like for it to be there Wednesday, so they put it in shop and have it warm and dry and ready to work on Thursday. They're wanting to put a new pump, correct me on this if I'm wrong, they wanted to put a new pump on and test and see if there's a restriction somewhere in the system that's causing the problem with the pump, hydraulic pumps overheating and not working. So we will take it down and try one more time and see if we can get it going. If that doesn't work, then I'll be back with you and we'll.
Well, you know, to me, it's kind of strange because we had freight liners that before we replaced them with the, with the Max and they worked just fine on with those, so to me, it's a good test to see if they have the right GPM pumps on those machines.
Yep. So give you a heads up on that. We had Greer number thirty-five yesterday broke a spindle and the right front tire went to the ground, so we got it back to the shop and we're in the process of getting parts worked so we can get that back up and going with the weather, not knowing whether we're going to have big snowstorms or not. In the meantime, I'd hate to be down at Greer, so gonna be a little bit of an expense there on that. And then my last one I have here and Dustin's here on this one, I'm going to get ready and turn it over to him, let him talk to you about it, but it's on the rock crusher, the, the motor for the rock crusher. I don't know if we're ready to give you a hundred percent recommendation today, but kind of want Dustin to go over with you everything that we have found out so far, kind of the, the ins and outs and then we can have some more discussion probably at a later date, but wait till then. Are you, are you?
I got busy here.
Yeah, you're fine, you're fine. We're going to go over the rock crusher.
Okay, let's go.
Dustin's going to leave it. This is kind of in his project, so turn it over to him.
So when it first happened, we contacted Foley and they informed us that we dropped an exhaust valve on cylinder two. But I've reached out to Inland, Foley and Larry's Diesel for quotes on replacing or rebuilding the engine. So far, I've received one back from Foley for around thirty-six thousand dollars. That's including labor, one year warranty. Still waiting on the other ones. Inland got back with me, they don't want to tackle anything with it. Larry's Diesel's still waiting to respond. They cannot find an engine to replace it, but they can rebuild one we have. We also talked to Travis Klein Smith, which is the salesman from Murphy Tracker. He's the one that we've talked to in the past about purchasing a new crusher, just to make sure that we don't spend too much money replacing the engine that goes over what the trade and value would be worth if we did decide to go that route. Also talked to him about possibly demoing a, a new crusher or possibly renting one in the future to make sure that we don't buy a crusher too big for the other equipment we have, so you know, we, we want to be able to feel, to load the crusher at maximum potential with the loaders we have, so we don't have another expense in the future. We spoke with Don Pemberton yesterday and he, he mentioned to us about checking that stuff out, also gave us another company, Fabic Cat out of Joplin.
Yes.
I reached out to them this morning trying to get quotes on replacing or rebuilding the engine as well. They haven't got back with me yet, but I'm sure they will. And he was also worried about us buying too big of a crusher where our equipment won't feed it to its full potential. We have a very good, good sized loader, but if, if we're not, if we're not keeping it full.
You're not going to reach, achieve the capacity, right?
Achieving what we want to achieve, so.
Correct.
I'm glad you're thinking about that.
And I had the same conversation with, with Don.
Don's a very smart man.
Well, he's a very smart man, you know, he's the one, he's the go-to guy if you have a question about rock in Burton County. And what I, what I observed in the past is, is that loader we have now, if the crusher's in the pit, you do have some wait time now.
Yes, yes.
So you'd be able to probably do fairly well, but yes, if we got a large, large one, probably wouldn't keep up.
Yeah, we, if, by renting or, or by getting a demo on one, we could, we could at least run it and, and feed it and see how, see how things come back, you know.
And I thought that was a pretty good idea.
And judge from that. But that's, that's pretty much all I got, we're waiting on quotes. Going to try to weigh our odds and make sure that we're not, you know, spending money that doesn't need to be spent.
Okay. So what's the, what's the timeline that you think that would have an answer?
Foley's quote showed three days travel time, so I'm assuming within a week they could have us up and going if we went with Foley, once we decided, you know, to go, if we go that route or not. Rebuilding an engine, we're probably talking quite a bit more time because they'll have to pull it out.
Right.
Send, send the block off. The thing, in my opinion, with rebuilding an engine compared to replacing it with a reman, when you, when you take an engine out and send it off and have the block checked, heads checked, you get all the parts replaced, well, every part that's replaced comes with a one-year warranty, but the block and the heads do not. So if something was to happen within, you know, within the next year or something, we'd be out that, we'd be out the money all over again, so.
Right.
You gotta, you gotta figure out what's best as far as money wise, which one.
So the thirty-five thousand with Foley was for rebuilding it or?
That's travel, rebuild.
So that's.
And also understand they had some work on that engine done in two thousand seventeen, which was bottom end?
I believe so. I, I wasn't involved with that. To be honest with you, Harry takes care of most of our rock quarry operations.
Right.
So I wasn't really involved, but I believe that they redid the lower unit, or the lower end of the motor in two thousand seventeen and now we've, we've dropped a valve on the top side of the motor, so.
So this is a replacing it with a reman?
This is a reman engine. It comes with one year warranty, you keep that, I got twenty-five.
So you're getting a quote from another family?
I've got a quote coming from Fabic Cat out of Joplin and another quote coming from Larry's Diesel in Pittsburgh and that was the closest place I could find that, that would even entertain the idea of, of doing a workforce on it, so.
Would be fair to say that we could possibly have this information by next Tuesday, make a recommendation to you.
That'd be good.
So that way we can make a move. And I also want to say, we've been in touch with Harry Sayers as well, he's our rock crusher. He's off on vacation starting last week until the end of the year, but we're still having phone conversations with Harry as well, so.
Good.
He's a wealth of knowledge for us.
Very smart.
Very smart man, so. Any, anything else for me that I?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Appreciate you coming in.
I see a crushing operation off of Highway seven just right by sixty-nine. What's going on with that? Where that quarry used to be? I don't know a hundred percent, but I believe that's to do with KDOT and their projects going on, but I don't know that. Okay.
I've heard that they're making asphalt for the new highway going towards Pittsburgh, but that's just hearsay.
Okay, okay, that one makes sense. Yeah. I see they're stocking up and they have a pot, pot area. All right.
All right, stay safe.
Yep.
First, the D-Ways information for later.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, I had a discussion with Greg Anver earlier this week. He sent an email, just then we talked about this in the past on our bond refinance and I told him that bring it for the commission. And I told him I'd have him on a telephone. Did you all get any information?
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Give me a substantial savings. What? Hey.
No worries.
Kane Walker, where are you? Upgrade failed.
Does anybody want a copy of this?
What is it?
It's what we're going to be talking about.
I'm going to be talking.
Might have to say.
There we go. I'm, I'm impressed, aren't you? Here, I'll let you dial it. Nine one. Eight one six. Five oh nine. Five four one, five one. First time's charm.
Greg Warren, Burton.
Hey Greg, Leno here, Burton County.
Good morning.
Morning.
How are you? I'm doing well.
So we received your email concerning the bond refinance, so if you wouldn't mind, I'll, I'll let you explain the ins and outs of, of your email and what we could possibly save on refinancing.
Sure, sure, well, again, good morning, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to visit with you and kind of the starting point for the discussion, just I'll start with an overview of the bond market, talk about how the low interest rates benefit the county potentially in regards to the savings and then walk through the steps that you would go through if this is something that you're interested in, but you know, I'm sure it's no surprise to everyone that we're in a very low interest rate environment, but even with that said, we, in the municipal bond market, we set an all-time record low in August and shortly after we hit that record low, we watched interest rates start to drift upward as we got closer to the election in November. And a little worried that that might be a trend and interest rates might increase from, from that point and after the election, but they did just the opposite. We had a pretty significant drop in rates ever since the election and we're back within eight basis points or eight one-hundredths of one percent of the all-time record low, so not quite at the record low, but, but very, very close and so the recent decline in rates has caused a lot of cities, counties and school districts to look at their outstanding bonds again, see if there's any opportunity to capture a saving and if so, then you know, a lot of those cities, counties and schools are considering moving forward with a refinancing. And so when we saw the declining rates, we had provided a couple of updates to the county throughout the year on the estimated savings, but we sent over an analysis about a week ago that showed based on current rates, what the estimated savings would be. And so the portion of the outstanding bonds for the county that seems to make sense to consider refinancing is the two thousand fifteen general obligation bonds and it is the principal payments in the year twenty twenty-four through twenty thirty-five. And when we do a, a bond refinancing, we can go in and look at each different series of bonds and then we can also look at, at each year inside of that and only refinance the years that produce a positive savings. So we haven't, you know, the, the payments before two thousand twenty-four just didn't produce a savings, so we just left those in place. So we would go in and, and sell a new series of bonds in those years, twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty, twenty thirty-five to replace that portion of the two thousand fifteen bonds that, that makes sense to refinance. And so that, that portion of the two thousand fifteen bonds has an average rate of about three point two three percent and is roughly about four point nine in, in principal. So we ran a refunding analysis using current rates and the new bond issue would have an average rate of about two point zero three percent and, and that's again, reducing the interest rate from three point two three down to two point zero three percent. And that reduction in the interest rate would result in a savings that would be somewhere around two hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred forty-one dollars over the life of the bond issue. And that savings, there's costs associated with completing a refunded bond issue and so all of those costs would be paid out of proceeds of the, a new bond issue and the savings number that I, I just shared with you is net of all cost and would be the actual amount the county would save over the life of the issue. And so when we complete a refunding bond issue and again, a lot of the other issuers that we work with, there are some industry guidelines that we typically look at when we have a refinancing and it's what we call the present value savings percentage. And so a lot of issuers will use kind of a guideline or a rule of thumb, if you will, that if the present value savings is between two and five percent, then you know, that ends up being in a range where a lot of other issuers might consider moving forward with the refinancing. Present value savings percentage on your refinancing is about four point four eight percent. And so that's a summary of the key highlights of the refinancing in, in regards to the process, if this is something that you were, would be interested in pursuing. From the county commission perspective, there's really kind of two key steps, if you will. The first step would be to give permission to us, serving as a bond underwriter and then Gilmore Bell serves as your bond counsel or your, your bond lawyer, to start walk, working on the refinancing. And what we would do after we receive your permission to, to start working on the, the refinancing would be to start preparing the, the legal documents for the refinancing. There's a document given to potential investors, it's a prospectus, it's called an official statement. We would prepare that information, we would work with the rating agency to have a, a bond rating assigned and then when all of that information is, is complete and we're ready to actually go through the process of marketing the new bonds to investors and, and locking in the savings. And assuming the savings would still be at a level that made sense to pursue, we would lock them in, bring that back to the county commission and present the final savings to you and, and if that is acceptable, then the second step of the process would be consider approving the bond resolution and it's at that point that the final savings would be identified and locked in and the refinancing would be finalized. So if we start, if you give us permission and we start working on the refinancing and something happens to interest rates and, and they go up, we would just simply pull back and, and either wait for things to stabilize or maybe if they just go up and never come back and the savings just is never at a level that makes sense to pursue, then we would just cancel the refunded bond issue and, and stop that process. But the, the process for completing the issue, you know, begins with getting permission to get started and it usually is about a two-month process with the savings and interest rates locked in after about four to five weeks. And then after, after the savings is locked in, it's simply just paperwork to take care of the, the refinancing and scheduling and closing. So I hope that's helpful. We obviously wanted to bring this opportunity to your attention and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So one of my questions is, were you able to possibly look at some of our other bond finances in the county and maybe look to see if we could have some savings on them also?
We did. We looked at the bonds and then I think, as you may recall, on the jail project, there's a, a series of what are called certificates of participation.
Yes.
We looked at the bonds and the certificates and it, it was really just this portion of the two thousand fifteen bonds that, that produced a positive savings or, or made sense to refinance. And you know, if, if we were to see interest rates, you know, continue to decline, it's possible that some of the other issues may then generate a savings and, and may make sense to add into the refinancing.
Well, I, I know we also have a sewer district bond, a, a bond that I think is a thirty-year bond.
Yeah, probably twenty-ten.
Back, back in twenty-ten, there was, that was, that the, the county is the, I would say, underwriter on or the secure party on. I don't know if that would be something that it called fire now.
Yeah, we should, we should look at that one again. We've had a couple of other situations where some of those longer bonds, it sounds like that might have been placed with USDA. Those can be very good candidates for refinancing, so I'll, I'll make sure we look at that sewer district issue as well and see if there's any savings there.
Okay.
So I have a couple of questions on the summary of bonds refunded. I think you mentioned that there were, what, three periods that didn't make sense to refund? Is that correct?
Um, yeah, and it was primarily the years twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three.
Okay.
So we, we just carved out, if you will, the years twenty-four through thirty-five and you know, and the reason we did that is, for example, if we refinanced the series twenty-three or the, the two thousand twenty-three principal payment and let's say it had a, a loss of five thousand dollars, well, you wouldn't want to refund a bond issue that's going to lose you money, so it's better just to leave that principal payment in place. And I did, I don't have that analysis in front of me, but we look at each year and determine which portion of the bond produces savings for the county and if it doesn't produce savings, then our, our view is, well, we're better off just leaving that alone and not refinancing it if it's going to result in a small loss for you.
Perfect.
So that's, that's why we left those years out, but as interest rates move, that could change too.
Yeah, and I, I remember those conversations is that the, on the front end, the principal payments are less than what they are on the back end of, of the, of the bond, so really to me, it makes sense.
So the, the other couple of questions I had on the, the first page is, this was assuming that we have a A rating. Do you know what our last rating or most current rating is?
Yeah, it was in the A category.
Okay. And then as par, par amount is that, I guess I have a little familiarity with home loans. Is par amount the same thing as principal?
It, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the, the principal amount of the issue.
So then on the next page where it's saving, I think that's pretty straightforward, two thousand twenty-one. Now here, this shows that refunding debt service for twen-, for those years, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, and, and so that, um.
So the savings chart was based on twelve years and I see this chart is based on fifteen or the, the refunding chart was based on twelve.
Yeah, and you'll notice, if you're looking at that savings page, the amounts in the years twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three are smaller than the other years, they're about a hundred and forty thousand.
Yes.
And then you, you go up to four hundred to five hundred thousand. So again, we're, and, and we can show you a combined schedule with the, what the new refunding will look like combined with the portion we left outstanding or what we call unrefunded. But those payments in the year twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three are, are just the interest on the bonds that we're refinancing. So in other words, you'll see, for example, in the year twenty twenty-two, right now on the, on the portion of the two thousand fifteen bonds that we're showing refinancing, you're paying interest expense of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six ninety-five. And then if we lower the interest rate from And then if we lower the interest rate from that three point two to two point zero percent, then the interest expense goes down, and your interest payment on just the refunding portion will be a hundred and forty-one thousand. But that isn't the total payment to be made by the county, because we would need to add back in, in those years twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, the payments due on the unrefunded bonds or that piece we left outstanding. And so when we show that unrefunded portion add back in and give you the full picture of what would be paid on the, you know, after the refinancing, your payments are going to be closer to the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar level in those first three years as well. But given that interest expense reduction, your savings is going to be about sixteen thousand.
In twenty-twenty-two?
Yeah, in twenty-twenty-two, exactly. Yeah, and, you know, it gets a look, and we tried to keep our refinancing analysis pretty simple and just show you a snapshot of the portion that makes sense to refinance, and then what the refinancing would look like, but then we can show you a broader spreadsheet, if you will, that shows you all of your bond payments, you know, before and after the refinancing, because that'll show you the complete picture. But the end result is that, you know, you'd have that savings of about two hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Okay, so now on the next page, summary of refunding results, there's a couple of questions. What is escrow yield?
Some, there are some refinancings where, you know, we don't have the ability to pay off the bonds immediately, and that's what is called an advanced refunding. And so when you look at that summary of bonds refunded, you'll notice that the call date or prepayment date on the twenty-fifteen bonds is September one, twenty-twenty-two. And so it works a little bit different than like a home loan or any other loan. Here, the first date that we can pay off the twenty-fifteen bonds is September one of twenty-twenty-two. So the way that we complete a refinancing now is we sell a new series of bonds, lock in the current rates, we take that money and put it into an escrow fund held by an escrow trustee bank. And the money that we put into the escrow fund today covers all of the remaining interest payments on the bonds being refinanced, plus the principal of the bonds being refinanced. We have a CPA firm verify our calculations, and so the amount that we put into the escrow fund, plus the interest earnings in that escrow fund are adequate to make all remaining payments on the bonds being refinanced. And then your bond attorney will give you a legal opinion that says, now that we've put that money in the escrow fund, the county's no longer obligated to make payments on those twenty-fifteen bonds we just refinanced, and you start making payments on the new bonds. So that escrow yield is, we'll take that money, put it in the escrow fund, invest it for, you know, until September one of twenty-twenty-two, and you get a small amount of interest earnings that money in the escrow fund is invested in, like US treasury notes, until that first payoff date.
The next question I have, there's a term called negative arbitrage.
Yeah.
I don't know what arbitrage is. I understand what negative is.
Yeah, and so, so the, so if, in an ideal scenario, if you sell a bond issue at a rate of, say, two point oh three percent, and then you put that money in the escrow fund, ideally, you would like to earn two point oh three percent inside of that escrow fund. And so the arbitrage means, if you borrow money at one rate and invest it at another rate, negative arbitrage means that if you're borrowing at two percent and investing at zero point one two percent, then it's kind of, negative arbitrage is interest earnings that you just aren't able to realize if you could get an investment rate up to the interest rate on the bonds you're selling. You know, and right now, negative arbitrage is just, it's, I mean, you think of it as almost kind of a missed opportunity in that if you could borrow on a, you know, a fifteen-year bond issue at an interest rate of two percent, and turn around and invest for, you know, a one or two-year period, and also get a two percent return on your short-term investments, then you would have zero, you would not have negative arbitrage, and you wouldn't have positive arbitrage. But we're in just such a low-interest rate environment that, you know, those short-term investment rates, you're not able to invest the money in the escrow fund and a yield be equal to what you sold the fifteen-year bonds at. Does that help answer your question, or did I confuse matters with that?
No, I understand it.
Can you explain it to me? Good.
And I mean, another way to look at the negative arbitrage is...
Yeah, you have an escrow yield of one point nine, and you got an escrow yield of zero point nine, and you've got a value to one forty-two. I understand.
Yeah, and...
It might be less than what you actually have the bond.
Another way to, another way to look at it is that if, if we did have short-term rates that were higher, then you might be able to pick up some additional savings of that, you know, a hundred and forty thousand. What I've kind of watched throughout my career is that when you have negative arbitrage go away, that means that the short-term investment rates are higher.
Mm-hmm.
But then usually what happens is, if your negative arbitrage goes to zero, and you can invest at a higher interest rate, that probably also means you're selling your long-term bonds at a higher rate.
Yep.
And that savings goes away, so it...
So if a thirty-year bond was at the, at the interest rate of, say, two percent, and your five-year short-term investment was point zero five percent, you're going to have a negative, negative arbitrage.
So would this be the opportunity cost for the difference in interest rates?
I'm sorry, the question again was...
Would this be the difference, or the opportunity cost in the difference of interest rates?
Yeah, that is, that is exactly it. It really is a kind of a missed opportunity, that if, in a perfect world, what would work best on your refinancing is if we had low, long-term rates and higher short-term investment rates. And right now, the Federal Reserve has pulled short-term rates down to near zero. That's why you're seeing the zero point one two investment rate. And so what the negative arbitrage is showing you, that it's that scenario, in a perfect world, if you could sell your long-term bonds at two percent and invest the short-term money at two percent, then you'd have no negative arbitrage, and that would probably add to the savings of about a hundred and forty thousand. So it's really kind of showing you...
Okay.
What's the value of that missed opportunity?
These are the questions. We're going to be moving along. Do you all want to allow, move forward to, with this opportunity to possibly save the money? I don't think it's going to cost, well, it's not going to cost us...
If we cancel in, or this doesn't work out in a month or two months, and we cancel, what's it cost us?
Yeah, the costs are contingent upon completion of the refinancing. So if we, if interest rates get away from us and we just cancel it, then no cost to the county. Or if, you know, the savings is just lower than the level that makes sense for you to approve, then we just simply put it on hold and, you know, hope to find an opportunity down the road. But ultimately, if it goes away entirely, there's no cost to the county.
Okay.
So the cost of this financing, I'm reading the next page, is, is it one percent?
There's two categories there, getting the page in front of me, but I think, you know, it's closer to two percent. You would want to look at underwriters' discount and cost of issuance. Those are the costs associated with completing the refinancing. And on an issue this size, we didn't have a breakdown of like the rating agency fee and the bond attorney and state treasurer and all of those line items, but it should be around two percent of the principal amount of the bonds. And so you would want to look at both of those lines, not just the cost of issuance.
And that's already sort of included in the, in the analysis of the savings?
Exactly. Yeah, the two fifty-one savings is net of those costs.
Right, okay. So what's your pleasure?
I would make a motion to pursue or allow them to move forward.
And I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi, David? Motion carries. There you go, Greg.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate your time this morning.
Are you going to have anything for us to sign, to allow us to go forward, or is this going to be a verbal contract?
I think this is enough to get us started. We'll start working on some of the documents and then be back in touch with you if there's any further items that need signing or consideration.
Okay.
But this will get us started, and we'll be back in touch.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Have a great day.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, Sparks is next on the list. Let's see if I have a number for Monica. I know I do. I'll let you dial.
Whoops, I don't want that.
Get my number up real quick. I think we have a listening number, huh? One six two zero. Oh, I'm sorry, nine, one, did you get nine? Two forty-nine. Seventy-one forty-nine.
I didn't see it on the agenda.
Okay.
Yes. Hi, this is Monica Murray. Please, please.
All righty.
So...
I know we've had the emails back and forth on where we were with the Sparks grant, but I just don't figure out the, the, everything's in, ready to go, and I'm...
With the timelines, any issues, roadblocks, difficulties, observations?
There's been some difficulties getting items purchased. You know, the credit cards have a certain limit on it, and with the processes that are in place with issuing checks to pay off things, is we create a little bit of an obstacle and a barrier to getting things purchased and to having things reported in a real-time manner, actually, as in there, going through and typing in a spreadsheet, all of the things that are paid out. So the county clerk's office went ahead and paid several things out on December eleventh. And I talked to Ashley this morning, and she is going to need any of the rest of the vouchers by December twenty-second. It would be nice to have everything paid off and tied up before Christmas, so I think that's certainly a good goal to go for. I know that one of the issues that we were having was just having checks cut off cycle. And so I think that the clerk's office, you know, cut checks off cycle on December eleventh has certainly helped move things around along as far as that goes, so...
So one of the things, and I don't know if this is a real problem or maybe a potential problem, but if we have to have the money spent by the end of the year, and we're spending that last week, being able to...
Well, it's, the problem is, is...
A lot of times, you don't get your credit card statement till a month later, and then you wouldn't be paying those expenses that were approved in the last week of December until you get your statement. Could that be a...
Well, I mean, I think that's a good question for Greenbush on what is the definition of purchased? You know, is it, is it when we use our credit card to purchase it, or is it when the bank, the money leaves the account? I would think that when the credit, when it's purchased with the credit card, that that is the purchase date. That's when it will be used. You know, it is, it is an issue with, has been quite a bit of obstacles on getting real-time reports on, you know, the money that, where we're at today, especially with this amount of money. And, you know, we had to spend two point nine million dollars in a couple of months. And tracking that is critical, because we have to assume that we will be audited. At minimum, we're going to have a single audit, just because anything over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you automatically get a single audit. And so we're, we've always planned for that. So as we're getting closer, though, we need to have real-time numbers and figures on how much is left in each pool, because if there's money unspent and needs to get directed to an entity who can spend it. Will Wallace is a great person to direct that money to, because he can spend it real fast on PPE and those types of things. So it's really critical at this point in juncture in time that we have a real-time working knowledge of how much money is spent and what's the plan to get that money spent. And honestly, I think emergency management and Shane, there's only three different accounts that we have at the county on the Spark funds. It's mine with B Work, IT, and emergency management. And so right now, it's looking like, as of last week, Shane with IT had about three hundred dollars, and going through, and I think he may have spent, sent that in to get spent yesterday, I think I have about thirteen hundred dollars. And so I'll put together a plan to get that spent this week, and Will Wallace had a dollar twenty-eight left out of that. So we'll need to get with Greenbush to see how we're going to account for every penny, so nothing's left on the table.
And we have a meeting tomorrow with Greenbush?
Yeah, I coordinated a meeting at Greenbush's request because of that, that issue there, so that we could get all of the department heads. The communication between departments has been an issue. So getting all the departments together and looking at the expenses in the real time so that we can have some sort of reconciliation between what the expenses, the vouchers that have been sent to the, to the county clerk's office, and make sure that they're the same as what, you know, what I send in. I've sent in lots of vouchers, just making sure that what they have earmarked to cut checks for is the same amount that I have submitted for, make sure nothing gets dropped through the cracks, especially as we get into these final weeks, and make sure that it's all reconciling.
And I had a little conversation yesterday with, with our county health, and they came up and picked up her check yesterday, and they're in the process of spending that last money.
So you're having a meeting to kind of reconcile all of this?
Yeah, last week, you know, we have, I have meetings with Greenbush pretty regularly, and last week, you know, we were talking about some of the pains that we're going through as getting through this last mile, and that communication was an issue. So, you know, at Greenbush's request, I coordinated a department head meeting. I'm hoping that all of the departments are able to be there. We invited, Lynn is the chair, I'm not sure, you know...
Probably tell you all in my face.
How much, Lynn will be able to provide, but just, you know, having somebody there. We invited the county clerk's office, we invited Will Wallace, myself, Shane Walker, and invited about three different entities over at Greenbush, so that we can get everything and everybody on the same page and know what money that we have submitted to get paid is actually going, is, it's all reconciled and together, it's going to get paid, all, every single penny... It's going to get paid all, every single penny. If there is a dollar twenty-eight left out of one account, how can we, how can we get that dollar twenty-eight spent?
And I know, I know that, uh, Green Bush is working very hard to contact everyone to make sure all the receipts are in and the money's being spent. They're, they're on top of this thing a hundred percent. So the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there's eight invitees.
We invited Ashley to attend it. She's not sure if she's going to be able to, so. It'd be nice, Kendall, if somebody from the county clerk's office could attend. Yeah, Spark money is create a lot of work for every department for sure. It's definitely been worth it to be able to help the population we serve for, for sure.
Great. We'll have another update next week.
Great.
Thanks. Jenny? What's that? Sure, I'll talk, call him since I get a little bit of a break. Oh, okay, go ahead. Sure, you bet.
Five-minute break.
Sure. You bet.
Anybody got any good news? We're taking a five-minute break.
Eighty degrees in Florida.
Eighty degrees in Florida.
So what are you saying? That you wish you was in Florida or what?
This is as far north as the Uquay as I want to be.
What's it like in Phoenix today?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven.
Yeah, I'd be there now.
That sounds better than Florida. Yeah, a little scenery. Little scenery. Ann, you have any good news?
I don't think I do. My office is sleeping forward there. I'm hearing just now lots of it. No, 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 no. I'd like to have a nineteen seventy-seven kind of snow.
That was what, sixteen inches?
Oh, no, that was feet.
Twenty-four inches.
Seventy-seven was, it was above the school bus windows by the time they dri- drifted and. Yeah. We still went to school too.
So I did a, started a snow removal company back then and that was, that was great.
Time, it was awesome.
But I can remember, we were pushing Larry Runkles, this is where the Washington area is, but there was a car parked out by the side. And my brother buried that car in, in, in the snow pile. I don't know if he knew who, whose car it was, but I, I thought that was dangerous and honorary, you know? See, see a car next spring.
We lived on the farm and Denny had his duty tractor and by the time we got home from school, he had the hood of an old car hooked up to the tractor and away we went. Couldn't beat those days. Kids nowadays don't know what it's like to be.
Sliding on the top of a hood?
Yeah. Hooked up to tractor going through the fields, over the fence lines.
We used to go over to Eddie Lumberg and his siblings' house. They'd have a Jeep. And you'd get a little slack in that rope and, you know, doing tight corners, sort of like sn- uh, water skiing. You get a lot of centripal, centrifugal force. Without helmets.
Oh, yeah.
Bundled up warm. That was before they, before you knew, new cars had seatbelts.
Okay, back to, so next item is, is vacation carryover. I was approached.
Oh, yes.
I was approached by one of our employees, uh, and expressed their concern and not being able, not being able to take vacation due to, uh, the work that they had to do with COVID. So, and I know in the past that we've had this discussion about vacation carryover. And I know this year's been kind of a, an odd year, uh, to say the least. Um, and I know that we've, uh, extended this, uh, before that, that, uh, we would allow them to, uh, have carried over vacation up until before March first, March.
So we've done that in the past.
Done that in the past.
And, and I guess I would, I would describe it like this. Our vacation policy is you, you use it or you lose it. And, and so there's a number of employees that because of staffing issues, were unable to use their vacation time. And I actually think going from March to, to June is probably a prudent thing because I think.
Well, it's true, but you're still, when you, when you get down to the six-month period, you're gonna have trouble taking your, your next year's vacation. Once you, once you pass that, you know, if you do the fourth, first quarter stuff, January, February, March, and April, and that's even one month after the first quarter, you're gonna run into the same problem next year.
Back-to-back vacations, but they don't accumulate, right?
No, they do not accumulate. You lose it or you lose it.
So you're recommending that we add four months for them to use it?
Yes.
Sure, I make that motion. I move that we add four additional months to enable employees to use their earned vacation time.
For two thousand twenty.
For, for this current year.
Here, a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I would say that we, I think we need to look at the vacation in the future.
What's that?
I think we need to look at the vacation, how it's done in the future.
Well, true, I agree. Uh, you know, and I think that's something that after the first year, we should, should tackle that. And it's been a kind of a discussion for quite a few years.
Sure, sure.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
So Kendall, that was a motion made by me to.
Allow.
Allow vacation to be, uh, accrued in two thousand twenty, to be utilized in the first four months of this two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, Laura. Sorry, I probably looked a little late. Good, we're good. Two minutes early.
I was at home this week watching last week's, um, commission meeting. And at the very, very end of the meeting, um, there'd already been a motion to adjourn. Kendall had a couple of questions on the longevity and I caught a little bit of talking. And one of my concerns is that it was mentioned of a couple of employees going back to an original hire date. That some of the employees have left the county and then they've been rehired. If you're gonna do that for one, you gotta do that for all. And there's also on this spreadsheet, um, former commissioner, you already got him down here, is three point eight seven. He just recently left the commission spot and just now started with the county. He shouldn't be on this, he shouldn't be on here, is three point eight seven. And unlike the commissioners, most of you run just to run for commissioners. Kendall, she worked in the clerk's office prior to becoming an elected official. I've been here sixteen years. I started as a clerk. Patty started in my office. So if the comment was made, it's because of the experience you bring, is why you went back to the original, even though they were gone for several years, then you're gonna have to think about everybody's experience, you know? Um, one way or another.
So if I can, yes, in that document, there was a hire date and there was some projected benefits based upon the date that was in that sheet, okay? But that wasn't the final chapter. There was a lot of discussion about, uh, you know, what is longevity pay?
Right. Longevity pay is how long they've been here, but if they've been gone for a long, a long time.
So then, then, then what, the way this is, the, the way that Kendall has set it up to pay it out, there's an effective service date. So for example, uh, if there's an employee who started in two thousand thirteen, left in twenty fifteen, came back last month, you know, on that sheet, it shows maybe seven or eight years.
Right.
In reality, he has two ye- two years plus a month, okay? Using an effective service date.
Right.
So, so those adjustments have already been accommodated for.
Okay.
And I think the other, the other question that you might have is, um, well, you mentioned somebody that was an elected official, uh, you know? The, the idea, does that start their qualifying service? You know, elected officials aren't.
Right, and I don't expect us to be elected officials.
Aren't, aren't included in this, in this, uh, benefit, okay? But, but just follow with me a se- a second. Let's just say someone becomes unelected and they continue to serve the county. And you've mentioned a specific case of three and a half years or something like that. Well, or, or let's just say somebody who's served in elected capacity and then is superseded, you know, or, or takes a different position.
Mm-hmm.
Like our court bailiff.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe, okay? The idea of, of, there's institutional knowledge that that person has by virtue of, of experience with the county.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so longevity, it, it, it basically was designed to compensate one for that institutional knowledge.
Okay, by using your example, by me starting out as the clerk in the rest of your deeds, my knowledge going up from, starting from the very bottom of the position until I was elected, I should get longevity pay because of the knowledge I brought to the office.
You probably do on your longevity portion that's in.
I don't get longevity pay anymore.
No, you're an elected official.
I'm an elected official, but based on what you just said.
So let's just say you come un- unelected, you still have, you know, your elected experience and you have growing up from your bootstraps experience, and I think the whole thing should count.
But if I left the county.
So if you left and the.
If I left the county.
The time that you.
On my own free will.
That doesn't count.
Right, and then come back, my new start date is from the day I come back.
Well, and, and I guess that's, you know, that's a decision that somebody.
Cause that's not fair to somebody who's been here four years, eleven months. I'm not up here saying that I'm, I'm asking for elected officials to get anything. I'm just out, I'm just talking about the people who were trying, were trying to retain people to stay here. And you've got somebodies who worked four years, eleven months, they're not getting anything. You've had somebody that worked here for five years, they left on their own to pursue something else. They came back, there was a job opening. Because of their qualifications, they were rehired. Their new date should be their rehire date. We don't hold any other benefit for them. Their longevity pay should be this, based on four years from now. You come and you're gonna be able to do this again, just like Mr. Rule. He started out as an elected official. He went to Roden Bridge. That's the date his longevity starts, when he goes to Roden Bridge, not when he started out as an elected official.
Oh, yeah, we already had the, the discussion about elected officials do not.
Right, but on this spreadsheet, he's got three point eight seven years.
Okay, well, I, I don't agree with that.
Point eight seven years.
So again, that, that spreadsheet has, it doesn't have the effective service date. It has, it has a few issues. But that was used, there's a pool of money, how do we distribute it? And, and so that's not what, the benefits are not being paid off that, off that sheet. And, and, and the person that you mentioned is, has not earned five years of service yet.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
Be careful of names.
But we shouldn't, we shouldn't be talking about.
I just wanna make sure that if you're being fair, you're fair to everybody. Because besides you guys who just run for your elected position and the county attorney, every single one of us elected officials has been in the position, we've, you know, everybody's been, I mean, Patty started in my office. You know, everybody's in an elected position now, started.
So one of the, one of the things, I know we're talking about longevity pay, but I want to amend the, ask for amendment to, uh, the agenda to discuss, uh, a pay matter with Laura. Do I hear a motion? I'll make a motion. You have a second?
Sure, I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. I, I, no, no, and I, and there's, there's some things that, that have come to, that I've kind of really looked at over the past few months. And I know that we, we've made pay raises here and there, um, not only for elected officials, but also for our salaried employees. One of the things that, that we forgot to really take into account that Laura has taken on a huge responsibility and an extra work and stepped up and has been, uh, really, uh, on her own reconnaissance, that she has taken over, uh, the, uh, roads. And, and it's a very, very, very big job. And I know we pay for doing extra work on things like that. And one of the things I really think we should really consider here, you know, shortly is do we, do we change our pay scale to compensate her for, for doing that extra work?
I'm, I don't.
I know you don't think it's a big deal, but it is a big deal to me because you're going back, coming back to, to nineteen fifty-four to try to rectify these road, road records. And it's taken up a lot of your time. And I know your office also makes quite a little bit of, of money on deeds. Well, until the state takes your money with from you.
Yeah.
It's just a thought, so just give that some thought.
Okay, but one, once.
On longevity though, we've explained to the, uh, the elected officials, in my own personal opinion, that anytime the elected officials has worked under the capacity, they should not be part of the longevity pay.
And, and I agree with that, but I just, my, my thing was, I'm, I, I wasn't up here asking for us. I was just asking because there's, uh, there's a couple of other employees that left and came back and they're, they brought experience and they're not on, they weren't giving back their longevity.
Well, I know, but just from my personal experience in my, of course, this is probably a government regulation.
But, I mean, Bobby had some people that left and came back and left and came back, whether they're still there. I don't think so, but just to be fair, it's either. I don't think so, but just to be fair, it's either one way or not. And that, and that's all I'm asking, to be fair.
And basically, it was a fair, fair process. Basically, this is the criteria, eligibility date, these kinds of things, amount.
Should be from, if they left the county, it should be when they started back up with the county.
Well, there's this idea...
We, we get the...
Yeah.
We get them coming back as a benefit to us, but they left on their own free will. So they lost that longevity, like, like they lost their insurance, you know? And, you know, um, cause we've had some employees that's been here for almost thirty solid years. You know, they stuck it out with us, you know? I've been here sixteen years, I haven't always been the elected official, and I absolutely love what I do. And I hope to have my name at the very top one day as being one of the longest employees that's been here. And I just think that if you're gonna do it one way for one, then you're gonna have to do it one way for some of the other ones that left and came back.
And, and it was all uniform.
Yeah, did we not do that?
Yeah.
No, you did not.
Well...
I've not mentioned names, but there is another employee that left and came back. That's not on this list.
And I, I, I think what you're looking at is a draft that was created from information that the payroll benefit system provided. We, we understood that there were some things that weren't quite right. We also, and, you know, they're like, for example, somebody that showed, that first hired on in twenty thirteen, but was gone part of that period and recently came back. And it was showing them as having, I don't know, seven years of experience. We understand, okay? And, and so we, we utilized the effective service date to capture that experience, that little piece back here and this little piece here, okay? And there were probably six or seven employees that have had interrupted tours of duty, okay?
Well, here the commissioners, you, you, you get to decide on that. I just want to voice my opinion that...
And, and, and the way that this was distributed, this was a one-time deal.
Right.
But there was some, some thought to what this would look like if it was part of every paycheck.
Right.
Okay? Elected officials do not qualify for that pool.
Totally understand that.
But let's just say after you, uh, you, you know, after one gets past the elected official part, but are still serving the county, they still bring with them all of this experience. And there's a lot of, there's not a lot of people that have, you know, two or three tours with the county. It's about five to seven people.
Right.
And we did our best to identify those through payroll records and to calculate an effective service date. And so the employee that you mentioned that was gone a lot of the time, he doesn't qualify. This other person that you've mentioned specifically does not qualify, uh...
Okay, I just wanted you to be fair.
I, you will find that it's been very fair.
Okay.
What I had to mention too, Gibson thought.
The what?
Uh, okay, I'm, thank you, but...
Hey, Laura, thanks for coming in and pointing that out.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. Jody.
How does your pension work? What happens here are five years that leaves. And they're vested in your pension, and they come back, do they get, keep that five years?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you're doing the same thing as the federal government's doing with service computation date, then?
Service computation date, effective service date is what I call it, but yes.
So, so back in those days, uh, it was very rare for someone young to be hired before they were drafted into corporations. I happened to be one of those, those people that, that was fortunate enough to, to work for a company for a year before I was, had to go to the military. When all my, at that time, all my military time counted as time in the company. So when I got out of, out of the service, I had five years seniority instead of one.
It was called affirmative action.
That is.
What, did you need Jody, you say?
What's that?
Did you say Jody?
Yeah, yeah, well, what time is it? Well, we're about a half hour ahead, aren't we? No, yes, we are. No, you are.
I make a motion to have an executive session, personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel. Three commissioners and Mr. Meeks.
Just to finish that to protect our identity.
To protect...
Okay.
To protect their identity.
And we're gonna leave this room?
We're going to leave this room and be back in, probably don't need fifteen minutes. Be back here in ten thirty.
I second that motion.
Go to that room and come back to this room at ten thirty. Sorry.
And who are we, who are we gonna have in this room?
Justin Meeks in the commission.
Okay. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Question, Chris? Sorry, I skipped, skipped a couple lines there. I've been wanting to get to one.
Do you want this?
I want it.
I keep it on.
Anna, it was good to hear your name mentioned twice yesterday, but I'm sorry that you didn't get to hear me either.
But I didn't realize, uh, on either, well, I didn't realize, Mary called me about the airport one.
Yeah.
And, um, even though there was some folks she wanted to...
Yeah.
And then the planning commission, oh, I, I guess I didn't understand, oh, was that, I assumed these were already vacated seats. Or that, that, that those people were, were leaving, had a special interest in leaving. I didn't understand that.
Well, it's not, it's not an automatic rule, but there's no place that says that it isn't.
Right, which...
And, which I don't think is fair, and that's what I'm worried with these guys and those guys down there, to let's make this more of a structured advisory board situation where we all know where everybody stands. And we have plan and we have structure. We know when the, you know, the airport advisory board meeting hadn't met for a year.
Yeah, yeah.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it kind of is, so...
So they need to, uh, okay, if they have issues going, at a minimum, they need to report to the commission at least once a week.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, uh, that, that would, yeah.
So, I'll drag them along.
Yes, no, and I think that would be, I think it would be beneficial on all levels, you know?
And I withdrew my name from the airport, uh, commission just because I didn't, I thought it would be a conflict, uh, serving on any board and then trying to reorganize the boards.
So, oh, okay, that makes a lot sense, so...
It should be a very good thing, just me, I think this.
Think so?
Yeah.
Okay. Their agendas are just horrendous, the city would expect to... Which? Um, there's some aspects that I, I, I didn't, okay, that's the way it needs to be, but then at some time, oh, my, and they only meet twice a week, I mean, twice a month.
Yeah, this is the last one for the year today.
I just don't understa- that, that part I don't understand.
It was just because...
And then it's been, even on the city commission, there's been those that expressed, you know, guys, we keep calling these special meetings, maybe we just met every week. We wouldn't have to last minute, you know, try and figure out when everybody could meet.
But they already, uh, said they're gonna have a work session every Tuesday for the rest of the year, so...
Well, that sounds, especially with hiring a new manager that you did, so... So no, I've understood that the current members on, apparently on any commissioner board could just automatically re-up. Which, you know, that makes sense, I don't know.
Well, I'll use the airport advisory board as a, a example. The one meeting, when they presented the airport plan, Mary was the only one present. How are we supposed to get from that to the, the other five in light, be re-elected?
Yeah, really, oh, yeah, yeah, and she did, you know, she's...
That happens at a lot of advisory meetings, uh, you only have one person, only certain people.
So how, I mean, so what's the point? I mean, what's the point?
And having a board, if y'all not gonna make the effort to get together once in a while.
I've seen that in service organizations too, only, uh, and then when something big happens and they get mad, and it's the same way with the county commission. Uh, you, you see the same faces here, but when you see a big crowd, then there's an issue because people are not interested in their government.
Well, there was a lot of people at that meeting that I'm referring to, dared to voice their opinion against a deconstruction of Indian Road. Well, they advertised it as a airport advisory board meeting. Only one person was present.
Yeah.
So they didn't have a forum to conduct that meeting, but they went ahead with it. It's the one that Mark McCoy officiated. Oh, and I went to Dave Martin, he was still around. I said, what about this meeting of the, oh, I don't think it was advertised as the airport advisory board. Well, it was, certainly it was.
Yeah, it was.
Yep.
Yeah, it was. I thought about going, and I didn't, but...
Yeah, I was there.
But yes, that was, uh, that was quite a, quite a deal.
I think it's, uh, we were gonna come up with eight million dollars, I had no idea, but...
Um, back to the, this airport extension that they wanna do, um... Has there been any discussion, why do we always keep talking about north and south? Why can't we go east and west?
It would require more property acquisition, and I think, uh, that bluff from the north pretty much follows the fence line around to the west. So it limits the length of the, of the runway. And they did have a proposal of a slightly, uh, deviated, I think it's a one-eight-three-six situation out there now, where it moved over to a, a three-twenty-one situation, but it was not, they weren't able to get to six thousand feet.
I, I just had never heard anything about, been asked.
The biggest problem I have is the pilot of the sky is they wanna shift everything a thousand feet to the south.
Yeah.
And there's no need to shift everything a thousand feet to the south. You can pin up that bluff, do a little bit of work on that, and you still have a thousand feet.
You're still okay. So that's an engineering question, huh?
But it makes it easy if you just slide everything a feet, then we'll worry about if the bluff falls off.
So, but yes, and then the people that live on that south end.
Yeah, they wanna go way up the hill.
It's, it's like, it's like the turbines again, you know, I mean...
Well...
Just, just...
To build all those roads and not, and, and the important of those roads to be built is just to extend the runway, but that's not why they need all the land. They need all the land for the precision approaches that they wanna put in, which are years down the road. Because not even, that's not, that funding is not included in, in that airport plan at that time. It's just in the plan, not, not expensive.
Okay, so, so let's, um, hold my process, going back to the east-west thing. We're now building new roads, or resurfacing or closing anything, right? But what's the problem? Oh, the bluff?
Yeah, they, they can't get, they, they're, they're looking for six thousand feet of runway. And you can't get six thousand feet in there, east and west. You got the road and the bluff.
Well, if we can fix the bluff on the north, how come we can't fix the bluff on the west?
Because they're already built on, on this north, and we're not built on this. So we may have to go out over the bluff, we may have to build a pier over the bluff. And that just wouldn't work.
Or, or pull, yeah, tear land down and build it back up or something.
Yeah. Cause it's quite a drop-off from that end. And it goes all the way down to the Marvetton Interac, and out there on the north end.
Yeah, not.
And look down, and it's quite, if you fall, you're not, you're gonna die.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Every woods.
I mean, I drive on Indian Road to go up to a property, but to see, see all of that, you can't just drive it on the road. Progress is hard, isn't it? Progress?
Well, what's interesting, there are a lot of trees down in that rural basin that somebody said war crap cut down, and they said, why? Asked, why would they cut those trees up? Because they just fell them and left them. And they said that it was interfering with their approach. I mean, we're, we're talking probably five, six hundred feet down that bluff. Those trees weren't that big.
Might need to go look at those trees, make sure it wasn't beavers. The beaver population is increasing exponentially in the county.
Is it?
Oh, it is, yeah, we're, we're having trouble out there.
We do lots of things in this county that's fun. It, it's kinda like, you know, when they opened the Shepherd quarry, before they did, they had a quarry that's already had been opened at one time, beautiful quarry. Uh, in fact, they, I went in negotiation, my buddy, for the first time, was gonna lease that there because they had one person that doesn't even live in Birmingham, threatening them with a lawsuit. So they moved it, and, and there was no reason for him to do that. And the guy don't even, he comes out there in his white suit, and he, he's, uh, looks at his plants and stuff. He's a scientist guy, he's a weird dude too. And he was, he was the only one, he only comes out like two or three times, maybe once a week, once a month or whatever, and he goes out and takes samples and looks at bees and this and that and the other. I think he owns, oh, about, I, I wanna say he owns three hundred acres, but he, he's a minor landowner rather compared to what the first he was gonna lease on. If you look on that map, one of those horses owns a heck of a lot of land. It always...
I'd rather be sued by an intelligent person than a crazy person. You can at least predict what...
There wasn't nothing...
Why did an intelligent person write that?
There, there wasn't nothing intelligence, he was just one of them people that don't know. It's just kinda like the neighbor down there, he was, he was, he's from Kansas, he's a deer hunter. He was worried about it. And I said, let me tell you something. He lives the closest to, actually lives closest to Rock, where Rock Quarry would be. And we've really wasted money on this other quarry. And the bottom line is, it's all said and done. He was worried about deer hunters, if they're deer, we don't even know who's...
They walked out.
And they walked, and they did, he had to move deer out, and you can't even, you don't even... You don't even hear them. He was worried about deer hunters, if them deer won't even know he's, and they won't, and they did, he had some of the deer out there, you can't even, you don't even hear them.
This, I think that one right there is hot. I don't know how it could, how to turn it on.
This one?
Hot mic.
It did. That'd be a, that'd be a Shane question there, because I can't see nothing else. I don't know.
Eric, you still need fifteen minutes?
Yes.
I move that we go in executive session for fifteen minutes to talk about personnel matters of an individual, non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. This executive session will be held in the room over here and we will return here at ten forty-six.
A second.
Any discussion?
You didn't need the people to go in.
Eric Bailey.
Sorry Bailey, I don't need to go.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Question carries.
I'm waiting to get my car punched for the free sub.
I I kinda think so too, I don't know why.
I thought I asked that question and it goes, yes, they.
We all probably know what it is.
I don't know.
But I really don't.
It would be nice for the public to know that because I got tagged with it.
Exactly.
And I'd like to be in them, and people go, well, you can put them in, but what if I wanna check them? Can I do, I do wanna check them.
So, yeah, maybe you can ask me, because I'm, I'm surprised they.
It needs to be, it needs to be put on the radio, it needs to be put out.
No, it's not, they're not. It was on my Facebook, that's all I, I, it's, I know.
I mean, I know.
Something like. Almost like, words almost like, dude, this is beyond our control, that's not what they said, it was.
I don't know. I don't know that. Because I plan to come in and pay some taxes. Huh?
Well, you can do it online.
Yeah, but I wanna check on some taxes, make sure it got paid, I may be paying money that I'm keeping. Believe me, I pay a lot. I still fight the humans. Oh, yeah. It's just amazing that I see, I'm like that. And then, a lot of times it's, they're here, I think they're. What they, what they say, they said that bad boys are sort of like fifty thousand dollars a day. Yeah, I mean, this, this is. They find out we're worth twenty dollars. And they can't tell you.
You gonna give it up?
Oh, no.
Oh.
Thought I had to return that phone call. So they said, why didn't you turn off the lights? I was enjoying.
They just wanna hear the gossip, right?
They just wanted to hear the gossip. Also, so we can talk about you.
Okay, what do I have to do?
Well, I guess my question is about the treasure box. If they're closed, nobody's working it. You put your taxes in the box, when they gonna take them out? Are they going to be?
They get out after New Year's or after whatever.
Are they going to be, the end of the time they matter so that?
You don't have to pay the penalty.
I'll write a check for an hour to see if they cash it. So they have to give it back to me.
But you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because it took us a month to get our truck, truck tag back.
When COVID started, I bought it.
Back in what, March?
Yeah.
Well, I have, let's see, this happened twenty seventeen. I took my TSP. My government account, they charged me six hundred and ninety-five dollars for the tax to do that. And I applied to get it from a waitress to take it back. Unearned income. I have a tax return. And every sixty days, I get a letter that said, we need sixty more days to figure this out. And I've got that letter every sixty days.
Oh. What, what I will tell you is the old name names. Letter leaves you. I was, I didn't get her off the bad list and stuff. And anyway, she's helped for the.
Homestead.
Homestead, they, she owns the homestead. So, her daughter, I took her father, got her father the homestead. Got a paper back saying that, yeah, she got it. We went to her office, the treasure box. And, uh, they can't tell whether that's gonna apply yet or not.
And, well, it hasn't been two weeks ago. And yet she tapped that letter for over a month. So.
But you're gonna put it on a bad list. How you gonna put it on a bad list and sell a property if you have to apply to homestead? You know what I'm saying? In quiet mind wants to know. So.
Okay, we're back in session and.
Do we have any question from Mr. Bailey?
I would like to request to uh go ahead and start the process on filling the administrative court position.
I move that we start the process of filling his department's administrative position.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Question carries.
And one more thing, on the bridge inspection that we approved or that was approved last week, if I could get yes circled on the low water crossings.
Where is it?
I will have to talk to Kendall on that, and then that way I can get it sent off to him. Thank you.
You bet, Eric. Paul, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Question carries. Hold on, take a short break, my turn now. So how's the COVID done?
Terrible.
I know that Union Towns, they're full of it, it's terrible.
It's all, it's everywhere. I think you can get it driving down your road with your windows up.
I think you can too, something's going on there.
Crazy. And I say that sarcastically.
I did, I did talk to my transplant team yesterday and they said that I could take the Pfizer or the Moderna or the.
Moderna?
Moderna, yep.
I would uh go either one, they're basically the same, pretty close, how they're made anyway.
Cool.
Hey, Joe.
Yes.
Can I talk to you for a second?
Absolutely. In your office or mine?
Let's step in our office here. So I missed your appointment on Thursday, vacation time, but it's only, remember you came Monday, it was on Thursday.
Uh, I think we said April, so April thirty.
Right, but basically you're having.
Yes.
I'm gonna do a reservation because these are, rest of practice a couple of years down the road.
Yes.
And I'm just, I'm going to give these to Kendall, correct?
Yes.
I said I'm just going to give those to you.
Increases.
Yes.
When do you want this to?
I, I didn't know when it would work best for you, so I left that date open so you could.
So it's best to start at the beginning of the pay period? It's best to start this at the beginning of the pay period, which would have been Sunday?
Okay.
This last Sunday, four and two weeks from Sunday.
Well, I, I wonder.
What, what's her name, let's look at this.
He's really rural. Said it's smaller than the. They have pasta. And all of a sudden, COVID has hit there. So, you know, his, his opinion on what he thought.
Yes, yes.
So he starts on.
Yeah, well, everybody's.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So how do you do that, advertise internally?
With this post in each different department. I'll find out from Shane how he does his and I'll do my own, he did his.
Is he still on yours?
Not yet, well, not yet. If you want a form like the feds use to calculate surface computation, it's really easy.
I, yeah, I understand.
Okay. I mean, if you have people that are in a picture plan, you have to keep it. It's a bank, because they haven't given up those years of credit and service. And uh, you know, it's a no benefits carry. And, you know, they'll say no benefits carried over, but I don't know how they approve those vacation here. You know, life's first day, the second time I worked for the government, I approved that eight hours of vacation would have been six hours had I not worked for the government before.
Based on your prior services. I know what I was doing there in Ohio, hey? You have, you didn't hire people, right? Or did you all count me? It's kind of dead end. You got thirty days. It takes, it takes many years. But you could approve up to ninety. But when you hit ninety, it's either lose or lose. And when I, when I got out. It, it's amazing.
There's going to be a couple city commissioners here too, so we might move this over here so everybody can be on the camera.
Well, you probably have to sit people, move them down and sit people here. There's not a way to really do it otherwise.
All right. Maybe we could. Could we do this? And then the people can move around this way?
So is this, is this open to the public or?
It's executive session, but we asked, there's going to be, Josh Jones and Pete Allen are going to be here. And then of course Nedra and Sharon and Lindsay Madison will be on.
Oh, they're not here either, are they?
Well, yeah, they are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The rest of people just can be on Zoom?
Yeah.
The rest of them just be.
This part's eleven?
Yes. All right, Lynn.
You're going to have to shut your broadcast down on your other thing.
On this?
Yeah. Lynn can do it over here at the. And you know why you get to shut this down? Because of what's going to determine this executive session.
Try to make that.
Do you know how to turn the volume? I have no idea.
This is for.
For those of you who are watching.
For those of you who are watching, at eleven o'clock or in a few minutes, we anticipate going into an executive session for an hour. Not only will the commissioners be present. Jody Hayner, Nedra Barr, Sharon Ross, Lindsay Madison, Josh Jones, and Pete Allen will also participate in this executive session.
They're being brought in, they're being brought in for their expertise. The commissioner can invite anybody they want, but they're bringing.
And, and these individuals, these individuals are being brought in for their, their expertise on the topic matter that will be discussed. Some of the people participating in this executive session are going to be participating via Zoom.
Sure.
And so that's kind of why we need this room for executive session is, is to tie in people that are attending remotely. All right.
How you doing, kiddo?
Very good.
He in there.
Okay. Motion, Jeff? It's eleven, or, oh, never mind, it's ten fifty-nine. Sorry, I amended early.
So I'll go ahead, you want to make, I'll make the motion. I move that we go in an executive session for an hour to talk about confidential data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporation partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships. In addition to the commission, it will be attended by two city commissioners, Josh Jones and Pete, Pete Allen. Lindsay Madison from the chamber is also participating as is Sharon Ross and Nedra Barr. We're going to be. We will be, yes, some, some of these participants are, are being brought in on Zoom. We will be shutting our live feed off because of the technology, we need to be in this room to, to hold this session. We anticipate coming out of executive session about noon. Right here, and which time we'll put back the YouTube channel.
All right, Warren, we'll be back here by twelve.
So I made the motion.
It has to all be set up, Jody.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, it does, I did it already.
And we, we resume that twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
Twelve. Second.
Any discussion?
I can give you a list of names.
Okay, we'll bring it in.
All favor?
Aye.
Question carries. Here we go.